All to order the budget here. Only item on the agenda for the budget hearing this evening is discussion of the proposed twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. I guess I'll start off just with a synopsis of some of the highlights, the twenty five, twenty six budget has is a sort of level funded with the existing services that we have, that includes forty teachers, approximately twenty four and a half support staff, six administrators, two hundred and forty three students, that includes fifty eight children with I E Ps. And a number of other services for the students, including nourishing health services, behavioral health, extended some programs and other academic enrichment. There's a lot of technology resources, materials and supplies, and the maintenance and upkeep of our two buildings here on property. In addition, that budget provides for technical and career center placements for some students, vocational classes. We've also been assisting students this year with some early college classes. And essentially trying to utilize the budget to best our ability to give as many opportunities to as many students as we can. You know, some of the challenges, as always, are small, are small size, our student costs is is high as a result of that, but you know, the benefits, I think outweigh the the downsides of that. We really provide individualized attention, small class sizes, and a lot of support for their students. Overall, the budget this year is approximately one point eight percent higher than last year. That is including debt service. So that reflects a reduction in debt service as well as let's say a moderate increase in the overall operating budget. There's the in in that one point eight percent, we have the majority of that is is going to be found in the salaries and benefits. That's about a hundred and thirty seven thousand, four hundred dollars of the total increase this year that is including our contractual obligations to the teachers, to the support staff, and a nine point five percent increase in health insurance premiums that represented quite a substantial chunk of money. We to offset some of that, we removed about a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars from the general budget, use instead chose to use some of the trust funds that we have available to us for technology athletic equipment. We had some unanticipated special education expenses that we were able to use our trust fund for or our certain capital reserve fund for. And trying to trying to be as judicious with the district's bonds as as we can. Budgeting for the things that we can anticipate, using those emergency funds for the things that we that we can't, that we couldn't anticipate. So another source of the increases this year, the school is taking on a a bigger portion of the cost of the school resource officer as part of the the grant that we part of the agreement that we entered into when we accepted the grant money. So the the town of Lincoln and the school split that and our the the portion that we have to fund of that that expenditure in both the town and the school went up this year. The school continues to seek outside grants for a number of things. We've been looking for ways to pay for projects like energy efficiency upgrades. And you know, continuing education opportunities for some of the teachers to go go to conferences and things like that. Well, we are the the budget we're proposing is essentially budget current budget levels of staffing and programming, so no anticipated significant cuts. And the the and the the anticipated tax rate impact of the budget increase is approximately eight cents per thousand in Lincoln and nineteen cents per thousand both property valuation and this. So that's the general synopsis of the whole budget. The other two sort of major items on the warrant is the teacher's contract. So part of the collective bargaining agreement was the renegotiation of the teacher's contract. There's a two year contract that's been negotiated. The four article reflecting that will shows the impact over the two years, we put both both years in there, but this year's impacted the two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars. That is article
six.
Six. The that number reflects an attempt by the board and the district to keep our salaries competitive with surrounding districts so we can continue to retain and attract the dedicated and talented staff that we have. So there's there's increases to the base and and overall, an overall increase both year one and year two of the contract. So year, article six represents the cost items for that first year of the contract. Then article eight, we've article eight is an article for two hundred and nine thousand dollars. That represents the the ninth and final year of the ten year flooring project that we've been working on. We anticipated it to take ten years. What we've done here is we
In the high school.
And
then we have to do the
Is that this? Yeah, so so yeah, thank you for the clarification. The the idea here was to compress the last two years into one year. That's why it's a little bit more, we usually write around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what that warrant article ends up being. This last year, we didn't ask for any money in a warrant article. We we used some money from the retained fund balance from the, yeah, retained fund balance. This year, we opted to put that on the on the warrant and explain that it is a little bit more, but where we are expecting that that's going to be the last piece of the the high school warrant project. And then the remaining articles on the warrant are just the standard capital reserve fund allocations. So sixty thousand dollars into the special education capital reserve fund. That represents the expectation of monies that we would receive from the federal government for the reimbursement, so that does not have any tax impact. We did increase the amount of unassigned fund balance retention in the facilities expendable trust fund and and in the technology expendable trust fund, that's article ten and eleven. The purpose of that is we are working towards implementing a capital improvement plan for the entire district. I believe they're getting the part of tonight's meeting after this is is a sort of a presentation of the outline of that. It's been spearheaded by Deb and and Amy and and they have been working hard to put together for the long term capital improvement plan. We're hoping that by allocating a little bit more money this year, we can get a jumpstart on on that. That's it, sort of the the big task, try to anticipate all the needs of the district going forward and to appropriate and appropriate, you know, the amount of money necessary to you know, have these funds available when these anticipated projects come to them. And then the expendable, the the equipment expendable trust fund, that's the ten thousand dollars, which is what we normally do for that. And that is it for the for the budget and the warrants. I don't know if any of the board members had any other information they want to share.
Nope, I think you did a good job summarizing it, that was.
All right, and then I guess Paul, you're the only member of the public, if you have any questions or anything about the budget or the warrant articles?
No, no.
Okay, right. Hearing no feedback or questions, then I guess I would move to adjourn the budget hearing.
Give the public hearing.
I think we have to do that.
Close the public hearing and then
And then we're going to do that in a period of meeting. So is there Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Follow the favor, signify the saying aye. Close extensions, the budget hearing is adjourned. We will now call to order the regular school board meeting. First item on the agenda is the school board budget. Or sorry, actually, let's see.
Well, we should vote on the budget first.
Yeah, let's do that first. Vote on the budget in the warrant. I guess, is there any further discussion on the budget before we take a vote on?
I just need to make one comment.
Sure.
On the the mission case, so you notice on the draft article thirteen. This is an article brought in, but it's supposed to go on the official ballot. So I just got certification on this from the attorney, they're probably going to renumber move that up to number three to go with the article one and two that are on the official ballot. So everything else will slide down.
Slide one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's fine.
Okay, so we'll be voting to approve the warrant as amended. Looking at different numbers.
Do you need each my article independently? So do you want me to change out the fourth article five? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve article five, which is school board salaries as presented.
Second. Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe, follows the favor, signify the saying aye. Aye. Close extensions, that motion carries.
Make a motion to approve article six, which is the budget in the amount of nine million, six hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars I presented. Second.
Tammy, thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Close extensions, that motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve article seven, which is the school board salaries in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars as presented.
Sorry, that that that's the
School teacher salary, sorry, did I say?
Yeah.
I did say school board, I meant. Union contract salaries, thank you. As presented.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, gentlemen, all those in favor, signify the saying aye. Aye. Close extensions and that motion carries.
Make a motion to approve article nine. The two hundred and nine for the floor project, two hundred and nine thousand, four dollars.
Very, thank you, Joe. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Close extensions, motion carries.
Motion to approve article ten, the special education capital reserve fund in the amount of sixty thousand.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, gentlemen, all those in favor, signify the saying aye. Aye. Close extensions, that motion carries.
Make a motion to approve article eleven for the facilities expendable trust fund in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Second.
Second, Joe.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy, thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Aye. Close extensions, that motion carries.
Make a motion to approve article twelve for the technology expendable trust fund in the amount of fifty thousand.
Second. Thank you, gentlemen, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close extensions and that motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve article thirteen for the equipment expendable trust for ten thousand.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Close extensions and that motion carries.
You good?
I think that's it. All right.
Deb, thank you so much.
I have to input this at the final approval through the G R A website. And then I'll print out the final copy and then I'll need you all to come in and sign. So hopefully next week we'll get it all signed, we get to have it posted.
You know, you have an expectation as to when I'm I'm I won't be available basically.
I'll probably have it done, I could probably have it done tomorrow.
Okay.
Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could send them Friday.
It's the snow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Educational focus, first step on the agenda is the assessment data. Yeah, I believe that's in your pockets.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today and allowing me to do that. So today or tonight, this email presenting twenty twenty four school year data. So if we flip over from the main heading page, right, we'll just start off with our district showing our student enrollment. And on bottom, we have student population breakdown, just gives us an idea of how our population is broken down into economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities and students without. So so you can look at that. If I do, this presentation has thirty eight slides, we're not going to go through detail with every single one, so you know, we'll go through some highlights for you and and then, you know, the others is for, you know, reference and and future. And if you have any questions or something about on next page. Um, we look at, it's also all district that will look at student achievement, education profile, it's school environment. And right above that, you can see the key, the gray is the is the middle at fifty percent. Light blue is the top, and then the orange is the lower. So if you look at student achievement, we are in the middle for our proficiencies in D L A math and science. We look at our our education profiles. Once again, we're in the middle for salaries, certified intern. And are we're in the top twenty five with our experienced educators. Next is school environment, which is a good one to be in the orange. Suspension rate out of school expulsion incidents and our average class sizes are all orange in that lower twenty five percent.
This for graphing, when you're looking at the proficiency achievement, fifty six percentile for proficiency, that moves you into the top twenty five percent. One student, one to two students would move us probably in all all for the E L A and math would move us into that. About seven, ten percent per student would be achieving that, would give us something. So every student is about seven percent.
Yeah.
Close to that, but yeah.
Yeah.
As a district.
And same with our academic growth, yeah. Yes, thank you. Move on. Um, this just shows our proficiency over time as a whole district. Um, and comparatively from the last few years. So we see, you know, where the district is compared to the state. And, you know, in twenty twenty four, last year, we see where we are far as district and state with our D L A math and science proficiencies. And then the graph above is just a reflection of that.
It's all by the science one, we're exceeding the state average.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the special with our colored boxes, we read this diagonally over the years. So you can see like when you are looking at grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and eleven in both E L A math and science, you can see where the how we've just, you know, grown from twenty one to twenty four. How that looks, how you move from grade
Gone down. It's the in the E L A, the current, well, in this eighth grade has gone down fifty four, fifty three, fifty four, forty nine.
Yeah.
And like I said, one student is about seven percent, ten percent, so fifty one student that
Yeah.
You look back at on the square we are for for twenty three, when you look at E L A, we we exceeded the state average by eight percent, so.
Okay, moving on. This gives us an overall view of our proficiency percentages, just a different way to look at it. Um, D L A math and science. And a, obviously, in those grades, they don't take that science.
Oh, gotcha.
State assessment. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, we do, we we look good in some areas, obviously, right? As you're as you're looking compared to the state. And in those different areas.
It's look at these numbers and get like
Yeah.
true and accurate representations because it was such a small school.
Yeah.
You know, there could be a grade that has, you know, nine kids in it that, you know.
And one person, one or two, right?
You're right, and and if you have a high percentage of special education students in a specific grade, that's going to make it look.
And if you look at last year's sixth grade, that's only eleven students, but if you look at their E L A performance on that seventy one percent.
Yeah.
And middle school is eighty, so part of the reason for your your you'll see that jump is testing strategies turning hot.
Yeah.
So I think that's a big piece, you know, I I think most of us have probably taken the S A Ts and they taught you how to take that test.
Yeah.
It's not cheating, it's not educating for the test, but there are certain strategies. And so when I checked in with the middle school, what's the way they do a little bit more in test taking strategy? So you'll see that would be our recommendation.
Our middle school team is phenomenal.
Yeah, they are.
And I all the teachers are, I think they just really have that time together and they they've got a great system and they think some of those tests take.
Yeah, as Mary said, that that's one of our strategies because, you know, you think you our students take just tests from teachers and then they go into the state test and sometimes they're seeing things they've never seen or how it is
Sure.
presented, and it does, it is a little overwhelming, right, and confusing. So that's part of like when we get to the end, you know, what we're trying to fill that gap in, yeah.
It seems like we're consistently a little bit lower in sciences. Do we have something in place to?
Yeah, once, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know. Yeah, we are, and we understand that and 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 we have really talked about, um, you know, revamping that science curriculum, making it more rigor and really looking at the science, right, you know, K through twelve, you know, right up through.
So what we started this year was really looking at those curriculum reviews. We're going to do it for all of the subjects, but specifically E L A, even though we tend to do well, we haven't reviewed some of the curriculum since, tell, two thousand and fourteen. So what's happening is, as you remember, Heather Krill has a planned block to really help us focus on curriculum. So we first started off with making sure we had everyone's syllabus from what are the standards, all the way from K all the way through twelve in the E L A and in science. The second task, which is due shortly, is what are you doing to assess kids? The third task will be mapping it back over our previously previous curriculum or spoken sequence, whatever you want to call it, uh, to make sure are these still the things we're teaching or have we shifted things? What are those, the new standards, the next generation science stands, what do those look like? So we're hopefully we'll have that done by the end of the school year. We don't have it done by the end of the school year, do something will continue on for next year, but there's going to be focus. And we chose E L A because we've been doing a lot of district professional development in last couple of years around E L A, and we chose science the next one because we knew that area consistently we're not scoring, we're beginning to score. And if we can score decently in D L A and math, we should be able to score decently in science, really putting those two subjects together and application, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll just go quickly because the other ones are the same charts, just previous years, you can look at those.
Gotcha.
Then we'll go down to where you see that vertical bar graph. Let's skip the colors, just look at that highly proficient. We'll look at SAS, how 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 it's gauged, because the next couple graphs will be color quoted. You know, proficient approaching, so you know, when you get to, you know, below, you're you're definitely not independent in the classroom. Right, you need some extra help, need some um, extra guidance approaching. You are approaching that grade level. You are also approaching to be more independent, once you get to be proficient and highly, obviously, you're an independent learner in that in that classroom, you're reading that level or above, once you get to highly proficient. Um, so just an idea of how, when we look at those, so we'll move on. And this next one is if grade eleven, right, in our sciences, as you can see in that colored bar graph on top, the same colors as the key I just showed you. We can look at or oh, okay. Um, and you can see you know, that that test was taken in last June. So that SAS test is coming up for us this year, but it is at the toward the end of the school year. On that, we'll take that, yeah. Right, we could see as we talked about the science at a high, you know, fifty eight percent. From some of the things we discussed, how we're going to fill those gaps, and we can address that. So I noticed that that sort of bar graph underneath there. Those are the targets.
Yeah.
On those, that's what, are those our targets? They fell to the state, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, one of the state articles.
Yeah.
We asked how they set those targets and it just kind of educated us of what they want to see, obviously, who scored. So those targets are the state's targets.
And there's no, but there's no target for science?
No.
Okay, we'll move on. That's just that bar graph that went with what we just saw. So we'll go on again to now this will be grade six and eight. Same colored bar graph. We can see science. And that's why we talked about really looking at that curriculum. Boosting that up eight, twelve, and then we look at what what that goes with what we just looked at.
Proficiency over time, that's middle school.
Yeah.
So it goes
The one that's on the page before them. Yeah, that that is that that is the what we just looked at, grade eleven.
Yeah, so we put the high school, so you can see it over time. Then goes the middle school.
So this is the whole high school. Yeah.
And and some of those are the S A Ts scores. No, yeah, just grade eleven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's grade eleven.
It's not the entire high school, it's grade eleven, because it's they're only assessed taking the S A Ts. And the sorry about that.
Nope. Yeah, and now middle school, and then when we go after this, you'll see that graph, put it into that. We'll see science and math and E L A. And then those percentages are where we are proficient and above. We flip one more, that that graph is now a reference to those bar graphs. You look at it in a different if you look at that over the years, we are, you know, not, we are growing, you know, in our growth. We can see. If you look at that over the years, we are, you know, not, we are growing, knowing our growth, we can see. Even even though, so what, oh, even though science has been down on that graph, you know, we did, we have improved over the years. And we still want to continue to improve pretty much that way for.
So the uh. This here, these colors correspond to the.
This, yeah.
So that's an, that's average growth, that's.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
Or or middle, middle fifty.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, yeah, that's the middle school, if you wanna jump to that, that's just, that's just leaving.
So what it does is it looks at the kids who took it last year, maps them back over time, if they were in our schools, the kids who have stayed in our school. Map back, and how did they grow compared to other kids in the state? So you're seeing for ELA, although we're in the top twenty five percent for our score in ELA, they've had an average growth, which is good. Um, and our math, they're in the top twenty five percent too, but they had, uh, they're in the top twenty five percent of the growth, so they're doing a lot of work. Clearly with the students, to develop those math skills, so the achievements tied and they're.
Yeah, we can jump from there on what um we just looked at, on that academic board with the gray and like blue box. And that'll take us into the elementary overview. We can see that um. The data was taken and proficient in math is thirty five, proficient in science is thirty, and proficient in ELA is forty eight. And a lot of proficient as above. Then, once again, that next slide is just giving you the uh graph of of, you've just seen in this bar, the different graph for the. Over the years of twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. That was in June. May and.
What is the difference between these two?
I think it, I think.
I think I just put it in twice.
No, you know. It should have a label on it, it should say middle school, and then.
This one says four through eight, and this one says four through eight.
Yep, that's, they're just letting, so we cut and pasted it from the G O E's website, they're saying that growth is only taken for those kids. Who are in those grades, because they had to have been here and taken, so remember, they only take it. So they only look at growth starting in fourth grade, so the second one.
Yeah.
Is our growth of our kids in elementary school, so those fourth and fifth graders. That should say elementary on top.
Gotcha, then this was the middle school.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
So the, this year. Um, it's the, I'm looking at the elementary school. Shows grade three. And the, and then state average, ELA and that, those numbers are.
I know, I I'm not sure that those are the.
Because it, it, they just happen to be the exact.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, they, there's something. Yeah, I probably put the wrong, and and we would have to go back to that first. To this one right here. That one right there, the twenty twenty four, and that'll give you the correct state versus district.
Okay.
So, okay, yeah, so, so that's a good reference to go back to that overall proficiency.
Three.
Yeah.
The ELA. Grade three, we're at forty four, states could differ.
So I don't understand that, if the state's target is fifty, why does it say target sixty six point one?
No, so the state's.
The state's average, I'm sorry.
They said a target, but we want all kids in the state to achieve at those, and then all the kids' test scores come in, they say, oh, the state average is actually this. But they have to submit to the federal government, where they want to see the state go, just says, we wanna set targets and so where we. So it's the same type concept, but then the test scores come in and you see where the kids.
Yeah, John.
Yeah. We'll we'll correct that bottom slide.
Yes.
So math.
That too.
Yep.
Was thirty nine.
Yeah, I'll correct that, send that out.
It is in the slide that your head showed, they just.
Oh, the forty nine is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Forty is.
Yeah, I mean, everything is state, right, it's equal to that, that's why I referred you back to the twenty twenty four overall proficiency percentages.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's where you'll have those true numbers.
So it looks like just in the, in the elementary school. Below average on. Below average.
Everything.
Everything, right? And so that's pretty significantly below that.
Yeah. Fourth grade is about thirty three percent now.
Yep.
And the target's fifty one, that's. So then. Haven't got there yet.
Same here on twenty twenty four.
Seven. Oh.
For grade six and grade seven.
Yeah.
And grade. We have a sense of just, I mean. We look at grade six. Grade seven. Grade eight, you know, we're above average, sometimes well above average. You know, and then. Do we have a sense of, I mean. We know that it's not like, they, they're, they're not learning anything, you know, much, just when all of a sudden they become geniuses in middle school, right, so is there like a, is there, do we have a sense of why?
I think there's two folds, I think, one is making sure that curriculum we have, we're teaching consistently in the elementary school. And through like when I came here last year, we spoke about the review we did on the curriculum, uh, the literacy work. Um, there is inconsistency, how that's being delivered, and that's part of the reason why I applied for that grant that we got for fifty thousand dollars. So that way we have time to study and make sure we're doing everything, so no matter what class you're in, what grade you're in, we're following the. Spoken sequence that we determined, so I think that's part of it, is that consistency, making sure that we're following what the research says about everything. With little literacy and general. I think the other part is the middle school time, spend some time, the test taking strategies, so I think that's part of it. They, they collaborate well together, and they do that piece of it, so it shows, when you pay attention to something. Yeah, it's not a fact, so. I I I believe it's those things, I think you'll see in the next few years to come, the, the curriculum. With the changes with the curriculum that we will make, and the um instructional approach change some. On those stores over a while, but we've got it, we've got to accept also that. We have to understand the tests we're giving, and what are those strategies we want our kids to do, and so that's a, that's a cultural shift. That can take a little bit of time.
So are any relationships like class size?
Well, I think some of the, if you look at some of the middle school kids, they're some high performing in the class size for a couple of those. Um, can throw that off drastically, you can enter a a kid that, like I think Kami said that, a kid. Drop the score down, or kids who are really high performing, they'll pull that score up.
Yeah.
Let's see, are you probably seeing larger class sizes?
Well, I think we did see that, right, we, you have.
Yeah.
In one of those positions, um, so last year, so this year we made it whole, so there's two teachers in each grade, so when you saw uh grades. Four and five, um, last year, we, we ended up moving um a teacher to help co teach with those, so we had two teachers. But there was a period of time where there were, uh, there was, it was combined into a really big class or four, depending on that. Not, I would say it's really big, it's big for this school, this year, what these kids are doing, what they teach, compared to each other's school districts, no. But there is clear research, smaller class size do support higher. But we did, I was thinking, stat in this, for this school year, so there are two, and last year, uh, we didn't have our title one. Teacher in that position, um. And um so we used her as a classroom teacher, and then we put um special education teacher within the classroom. Uh, which is actually really good instructional model, uh, so having that. One teacher less helped us move a really good instructional model forward, and the teachers now are seeing the benefit of having the special educator to teach. Within the classroom and uh support the students, so. But, that's, there was some shifts around in the last few years. But like I said, one student can throw this completely higher or lower, because our class size.
As long, looking, I'm trying to think in my head, who's in the, because it's the next year now, who's in some of these classes.
Yeah.
When you go there, it's like, okay, I can see how that can happen.
Yeah.
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 And do we get the grandeur of that, that allows you guys to target interventions for?
Yeah, and I think that's what we're gonna show you, our new system at the very end, what we're doing and some of the success we're seeing.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, well, well, let's jump over to N E W A, that you'll see the N E W A page, and W E A. Then we can look at our N E W A testing. First one is overall. Yeah, overall math grade level, right, so we have our low, our low average, average, high average, and and our higher percentile. And um. You go through that and see grades, you know, one through. Twelve. And we can just see that, obviously, we're not tall, N E W A's not getting um rated in grade twelve system. This is more of, our, our N E W A is really more of our elementary and middle.
But if you were to map these back onto each other, you can see if you just jump down to. Overall reading grade six, for kids in the lowest percent, out there is zero, right? So then you look at that New Hampshire SAS score. We're in the top twenty five percent, so you, you can map these back on, so when we struggle with understanding the SAS. Like, it's a one-time test, this test is given multiple times a year, and it's, it's yielding similar results, so it says that we have to look at our instructional.
Yeah, so that they'll just go around into math, reading, and language. Yeah, like spring of twenty three compared to like last spring, correct? So we took that in, you know, June, you know, late before. You know, you can just get an idea of how many kids, you know, that we have in those classes. As if you just wanna look at that, um, you know, the count is now. So as we talked before, we, we have some new data to present, so I I know you wanna look through it, but if we could kinda skip through. Till you get to a um. Slide that says branching minds tier level.
So this new system that we bought, where it automatically uploads a couple of pieces of data for us, right now, it takes the N E W A data. We upload it in, it looks at it over two years, and then it also, we can add, we have the New Hampshire SAS into it. It then helps us look at how are our kids doing for academic, we can, they will also. Upload our attendance data, and it's gonna upload any behaviors and our students' grades, so then we can say, which kids, when you look at. Math, can we, so we take in attendance, all these things are the kids that we might need to add a different thing, like in instructional approach to. Or we need to extend, it'll save them, so when you're looking at the branching minds tier level report, math, it's taking the kids. And putting them in tiers, and then, so I just wanted to set that, and then Peter.
Yeah, so those different tiers, like we have tier one, tier two, and tier three, and those are represent, representing um. Here one would be just your normal instruction from your teacher, right, you don't need any extra assistance, any extra. You know, guidance or intervention, um, and then tier two would mean that you need a little bit of some guidance, of some attention. And then obviously, tier three is for students that maybe one-on-one, maybe, you know, they need additional, you know, assistance and plans. To help them get through that, so if we really look at that, we can see that um, out of the, you know, ninth. Tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, we are really high in that tier one, um, category of of our students getting. You know, that, that information.
And is that last year again, or this year? This is, this is this year. Taking the N E W A for the last two years, plus what we've given this year, New Hampshire SAS added into it, what do we look like today?
Yeah.
So it's today's.
That program, it puts all the variables together.
Yeah.
When did we purchase that, this year?
Um. Over the summer.
Yeah. This year.
It's brand new.
Yeah, we haven't used it before, yeah.
The idea that this is supposed to be some holistic picture of, of the student.
This is great.
Yeah, and and the really cool thing, I, I, I'll get a little excited here, so. Um, the, the greatest thing about this is then it drills down to that student, and we can look, I can pull up, say, Mary's study is a student, and. She's in the red for reading and in the green for math, and um, and uh maybe her attendance isn't great. I can click on that, it'll then pull Mary's studies, reading scores of where she's, her strengths are, her weaknesses. Then it suggests interventions, you then write a plan in there and monitor it, and all the teachers can contribute to that. And so then we're, then we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is the monitoring every few weeks to see if we're. Moving the needles, need needle on students, and giving us appropriate recommendations, and then you can have those. Conversations with the parents, but this is our high-level report that Peter and I can go in and say, are these tiers moving, are they shifting? And you'll see that, yeah, it's a good thing.
So obviously, green tier one, um, orange tier two, and that red is tier three. So we'll move on to um sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, middle school now, um, once again. Middle school split pretty evenly right there. On sixth grade. But I mean, we can see most of the grades are. At tier one level where we want them to be.
Looking there, the second grade, guess the mathematicians there.
Right, that's pretty cool.
Yes.
Yeah, and then as we just move on, it's, now we move into elementary on for math. Same thing showing us that, right, majority of our students, like the second grade, all, all are on tier one.
But if you look at that math, just first and second grade, um, we have one student who needs that high level of support now. Um, and three need a little bit more instruction, maybe room instruction, similar things, but. All of our kids in second grade.
Yeah.
Are where we want them to be. Yeah, which is good, and you can see that the first grade's moving the students too. Yeah, which is good. And you can see that the first grade is moving the students too.
Yep.
As we move on, we go back to high school for reading. And our goal is keep moving out of tier three and from tier two back to tier one. And as Mary said, the good news is, is it gives you that intervention to fill in those gaps.
So this um, new program, are we gonna? Will it be, give us sort of a historical view, like in the next few years, we'll be able to see, okay, that this ninth grade. Where this group of kids, this is what, this is what the ship we've seen and how we've moved kids out of. Into the tier two, sorry, here to one, two. Obviously, we don't have that data right now.
We don't have the data, but we do have like, the, we, I could go back and pull. Last year's data because we uploaded it. So we even have more than one year at a time. So we can. Look at that from last year, the kids that we had, um, and it will have last year's SAS in there all.
Oh, so you could, you could go back and look and see what, where we were last year versus.
Yeah, like we can compare the years.
I think that's, that's always helpful for us. It's because of the small class sizes and the, the small sample sets that we get and assessing. It's always helpful because generally speaking, we have the same core kids moving along. I mean, you can see, it's easier for us to sort of see the progress.
And we, and we can bring that if you want at another time to say, how did we move these kids this year? And that's, it's a pretty easy report for us to bring up. How much ever. And um, so the, the mandate really was for the teachers to go in and look at it, see what it looks like. We do have a couple of people in the district who are using it at a very higher level, like our interventionist that we have at the elementary school. So she can train the other teachers on how to use it and to get her familiar and all the tools in it and making sure that it's still aligned to all of our. Uh, so.
Nice.
And just out of curiosity, when, when it suggests interventions, what sort of educational models is it using for that? Is that?
We can put it, so we, we put in the ones that we.
Okay.
That are research based, the ones that we've already purchased or things that are free, um, but it's, it's aligned to our standards.
I'm just thinking of work. We're trying to get everybody.
Put cut scores in too. So I put the higher cut scores in, uh, so that way. When we're looking at that, we're looking at a national average, not our, like, we're not where our, our school district is doing um, in these tiers. Where is it nationally? So we can push um, a little bit higher.
I like this.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can, you know, look through that and if you get to the end, it actually shows you with those pyramids. Um, what we're talking about and how we can see those shifts happening.
So what we did, we just put the elementary school and we just said from ten eleven to two eleven. Where are we? Have, how we, how have we moved these students? Um, so you can see that um. We moved. If we look at the uh, tier, the, the red ones, you can see that um. We've moved eight of the kids out of that. Um, so you can see this triangle actually is getting smaller.
Right, you went from sixteen, you know, sixteen.
We have, only have eight, we have eight kids who are still in red out of sixteen. We have five that are uh, in tier three. And then we've moved, out of those sixteen kids, we've moved three of them. Into green. So you can see where we're moving the kids to, to what intervention.
That's cool. Yeah.
Levels are.
Yeah.
And you can see that some of the tier, some of the tier, two kids are now tier one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
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 That's awesome. I love that. That's what a great.
It's an easier report to see and understand. It's easier for the teachers versus trying to dig through all this.
It's easy to individualize it too, where you can pinpoint and say, these are the ones that need the more help or.
Well, we have demonstrated success come in last, all last spring to spend time with us relooking at our SAS data. It's so complex to look at that data.
Right.
This drills it down for us and it allow us to really put those individual plans.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's great. How many total AP students we have?
It comes from last.
Yeah, last year we had um, nine.
Oh, I see, right.
So you see that twenty twenty four, nine, it's students, twelve total exams.
Yeah.
And um, so.
Seventy eight percent of our students scored three or more.
Well, you can see how we've grown over, you know, the last few years. With that AP.
And, and a bigger part of that growth was, I mean, thank you, Sean Higgin. His US, his history classes really did and our English classes scored it. I. Per on it, um, when I asked him what he had done differently. Um, compared to years before, he said that because he's such a small school and that these are the kids he sees all the time. He realized his, the way he was administered his test within the classroom had won his voice only. So they were used to hearing his voice and they go and take these tests and it's a different writer. So he started trying to write the questions in all different um, voices, if we were to say.
Uh, yeah.
And that way it allowed the kids to be uh, more responsive when they read the test, they understood it versus this is Mr. Higgin who had taught him forever. And this is how he writes his test. So, once he started doing that with the students, he noticed there was a change. So not that's really good for him, but like, you, like, understanding tests and things like that is important.
That was great that he recognized and addressed it. Very good. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was fantastic.
And we also sent um, another science teacher to AP scale.
Great.
And we're sending another teacher this.
Sure, this summer.
Summer.
Fantastic.
And then the next one is our SAT um, data.
And we're about national coverage.
So we take the SATs, that's when you find out if you're a test taker or not.
Yes.
Or you know how to take the SAT test.
It's really about that strategy of how to take those tests because that was a great thing that Sean came up with that, that different voice. Student sees a, a state test or a Newa, it's written in an entirely different voice than what they're used to. Especially when you're younger, that throws you off, so.
That was great inside. Yeah.
It was.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and then just that very last slide is just our areas of strength and growth. You know, some of the things we've already talked about that you asked us um, previous. You know, we hired an intervention coordinator, Joanna Bosso. And you know, she's new this year, so we're really beginning to see some changes, you know, with that. And we also have two teachers that will become ESOL, are they?
They'll be certified.
Yeah, they'll be certified.
They are um. Certified to teach it in the state, uh, or licensed, I guess it's called. They're licensed and the final certification will happen. Um. This, we're one of them.
Right, yeah.
And then the other one next year.
Yep.
Um, but they have planned plays and, and just. They've been very phenomenal, it's just picking up where these kids need instruction and even today. We had to administer our access test and this is my third year here and it's the first time we've been able to administer ourselves. We've had just higher front factors.
Right, right.
Because we didn't have anyone trained and he went to the training together and they did the train, they administered today. And finish it tomorrow with our students. But we do see those students who start with us, who might have English as a second language. When they start with us, we discharge them pretty quickly for me as well. Um, so that's a huge strength in the elementary school.
And that's Dory, Dory Weeden and Joanna Bosso or.
She really is.
Yeah, they're doing great.
They're doing.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your talk.
Thank you. No, thank you.
If anyone has any questions or comments about that. All right. Uh, next up on the agenda is the approval of the press fund public hearing minutes from January twenty second.
Make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion on that? Favorite thing about saying aye?
Great job on the minutes.
Close extensions and emotional barriers. The next up is the approval of board. Meeting minutes of January twenty second.
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
All those in favor, saying aye? Close tensions and that's what carries and last step is see who will be non-public session minutes from January twenty second.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
If you don't, all in favor, saying aye? Close extensions and. Uh, I did not receive any correspondence. Just the, uh, the uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, just the newsletter, sorry. Um, yeah, the only thing, again, I'll, I'll send out um. Hopefully by Friday or tomorrow, um, for the warrant, our post we sent and then there's the corresponding budget before the MSRC. You know, the signatures and then we'll get that question.
Thank you. And Dr. Stedy.
Okay, uh, so back to literacy and the work we're doing. Um, so we have Maureen Watson, who is really coaching our. Um, teachers through how, uh, how to deliver literacy instruction and assess students around that. So she'll be here next week for two days and um, tomorrow we have our second literacy meeting on the grant received. Um, both of those things are aligned and they're teaching the, uh, the, the same subject area. So not getting too different, it's just. Being double post uh, with that. Uh, our applications, um, to be part of the CPG are being reviewed by two rep now. Um, and they will notify the members on February fourteenth. Uh, we had a pretty good.
Excellent.
Uh, return on that, that they told me yesterday that probably going to need to make cuts to keep the teams small.
Fantastic.
But I, I was very pleased because I was so panicked, we wouldn't have enough uh, to hear that.
No, that's great.
There's a lot going on in the news, so I just figured I would give you the feedback of what I'm receiving.
Yeah.
Um, so immigration. I attached a document that school districts are sharing that was actually drafted by our legal counsel. Um, just so you're aware, our district doesn't collect any um, information on uh, immigration related information. On our students in, uh, in accordance with federal law, we would, we don't collect it. Even if we did, we would be uh, not allowed to, as you said. Right now, Peter's just collaborating with the front office staff, um, just to under, if someone were to come in and say. Come into our building, just to make sure that we're following protocol. Um, there's a very structured protocol here. I don't anticipate we would need this, but if you want me to follow this to the teeth. I'm happy to do that. Just let me know what you want me to do about that. It's literally making sure that. Uh, we have calling our attorney and that we have the right warrants, um, because there's two different types of warrants. But uh, it's for your information, if you want me to follow this, you can just direct me now and I'll say, yes, please follow this.
There were a few things in here when I read through that I never would have thought of.
Yeah, right.
Updating the emergency contacts.
Yeah, yeah.
Home, I would have never thought of that, that, you know, if, if something were to happen at home. Where does that kid go after school then? You know, it's like, whoa, um. I mean, I, I definitely think it's a, it's. I don't know, I don't know if we need to follow it to a T, but we should have some.
So, some of the things pulled out of here, making sure we understand the warrants that are updated, got.
And the fact that they come looking like, uh, a lot like a regular police officer sometimes, or could have local police officers with them. And, and that's an intimidating thing for any, so.
Yeah, so what we're doing now is if someone, if somebody were to come, we're not doing it, but if something were to happen.
Right, right, right.
The front desk is calling Peter, Peter's calling me and I'm calling our attorney.
Perfect. Before anybody gets in the building.
Before anyone gets in the building.
Absolutely. Yeah. Now, it's stuff that we're fortunate to live in the part of the country we live in that this isn't an everyday occurrence. Thank goodness.
So and then there's been some information out here on federal grants and. Putting a slot on. So I, just so you're aware, we only have positions associated with our IDA and our Title I grant. Both of those grants are mandated by federal law, so those would have been the ones with, there was an exception anyways. Um, so I think we're, we're going to be fine with that. Um, and even with IDA, we don't get a ton of money in federal grants anyways. It's in both of these, it's probably one point five F T total between the two grounds. So it's, it's not four or five positions such a, uh, but we did look at that just to make sure that, you know, what would, what could happen. What should we be doing? Title nine, um, is back to the twenty twenty regulations. Um, so all that work we did and all that you guys read. Uh, it's back to that. We have already attended one training just to refresh us. On what those twenty twenty regulations on. We will continue to go to trains on that. And then we're just waiting for the New Hampshire School Board Association to make a new iteration. Of those, but um, we're, we're set to follow the twenty twenty, even though we have the twenty twenty four. We are familiar with that, so we will bring those policies forward. Um, transgender students in sports. Um, when we looked up this policy, um, I had our. Our legal counsel reviewed the one from the New Hampshire School Board Association to say, can we have something that. Allows us to say we're implementing both state and federal and then if something were to happen, we call our attorney and that's what our policy does. So it's, it, it aligns with both state and federal as best they can with, and that we would contact our attorney. And then you guys would make a decision. Which way we really need to go. But I had them do that on purpose, so we wouldn't have to move this back and forth.
Right.
And then on the last, we have no school uh, in a couple of weeks, we're on spring break. I think that's in our annual district meeting. That's March eighth, but those, there's just some updates there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Talking enough tonight or you have more?
No, I, I can keep going, I can keep going, don't worry. All right. Um, yeah. I'm sorry. Um, yes, well, how about this? We'll start off with our boys and girls ski team, right? Yeah. Dance, boys are state champs, girls are runner up, whatever, you know, parade. We had that nice uh, parade last night into town, very nice and a nice greeting. We had a Sundays. Waiting them and cookies and fans and so it was very, it was very nice, very exciting.
School came in second today?
And the moms here can tell us.
Yes.
Middle school came in second.
Yeah, at that red parka, was that at a toss, correct?
Yes, I saw, yeah.
And I, yeah, and what I didn't know. Yeah, and what I didn't know was Coe.
It's Coe.
Yeah.
Miss Janet Crowe.
Yes, that is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Good, congratulations. So I believe, we'll, we'll stick with the, we'll go back to high school in a second, but in that red parka. Uh, Greta gold medal and Jessie. Cory silver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yep, so definitely, we, you know, second place. So continuing with the boys and girls in the high school. Um, McKenna Mac, Meredith Saborn and Hazel Wilson. Are, will go to the uh, meet of champions.
Nice.
And on the boy side, we have Wyatt leading, leading, excuse me, Barbara Krill. Uh, Kai, uh, Lucas and Andy. So um, Lucas Strong and, and Andy Morrison, um, Kai. Man Sheramani, thank you. Uh, are all going to the meet of champs, which is February.
The whole team.
Yeah, I believe it's that cannon, that cannon.
Oh, really?
Yes, yeah, next week I can.
If you can go and share them on.
And I know it, it just keeps giving Wyatt gold medal, Harbor bronze. And McKenna won a silver and bronze in the high school.
Fantastic.
I know, fantastic, huh?
They're all camp kids too.
Yeah. Good to hear, isn't it?
I love it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and we uh, finished up on uh, January thirty first, our winter activities at the elementary school, which is very successful.
I love that program. Can we go back to the six or eight weeks?
Well, Luna's asked. Well, Luna's asked again this year, if, if we wanted to extend. And I think what we need is better planning, you know, they always come at the end of the year, do you want to extend and, yeah, right, right. Yes, yes, so I, I think we're gonna look at that for next year to see if we can.
Yes, please.
Extend it, okay, yeah.
We used to do, we did eight weeks, like my kids are little, that were four.
Yeah, we just do the month of January, correct?
Yeah.
We could do that.
We just seven weeks. Well, six weeks would get us to um, what's the kind of week, so that. Yeah, so do six weeks.
Last day of the event is happening. Last day.
Well, then, well, yeah, because it's elementary.
They're going up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure um, all go up.
Sure.
We're trying to look to make sure elementary can go up this year and, and so on Thursday, the high school goes up, so we'll just jump into winter carnival, which is next week. And the high school, uh, will prepare all week with their uh, hallways and snow sculptures.
We're doing snow sculptures.
Yes, we are, we finally got enough snow, this, we're getting dumped out again this weekend, right?
It'd be huge.
Yes, it will be, right? We won't have to borrow any snow. Yes, I know, so, and uh, Mr. Calder was ready to transport that. Hey, Mother Nature cooked you off, right, they gave you a break.
Yeah.
Well, gave us a break. Why don't you do that? Okay, yes, okay. Uh, that's right, I didn't know. Uh, elementary school on February fifth, uh, celebrated their annual uh, one hundred day of school, boy, they get into that and. They love dressing up or bringing in a hundred items. Um, so they, they really take that uh, and run with that. And our PSU student teachers, we have two of them, right, Julia Donovan and, and Courtney Peabody. And they invited a former, uh, not a former, excuse me, a fellow student. Who's an ambassador representing Morgan's message, which really has to deal with mental health and the stigma around mental health. And um, and that was to their high school um, health classes.
Nice.
And that went over very well.
It did, yeah, a bunch of the freshman girls, my daughter joined and a couple of her peers, um. Some scholarship, something that's going on with Morgan's message, they had a meeting tonight, they loved it. And yeah, it's mental health specific to athletes.
Yeah.
So talking about um, which is, you know, a super important thing to address, big hit.
Good, glad to hear.
And I have to say too, the um, student teachers are a big hit. If, uh, from everyone, that every student that I hear from elementary school to, to high school, so.
That's great.
Yeah, it's been awesome.
And they'll appreciate that feedback, thank you very much.
And part of the hopes is that they will. They'll anything.
Yes.
That we have.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're definitely getting the encouragement.
They, they do love our, our schools.
I, I don't, I don't wanna forget to thank Erin. Jeff, Clairemont, Marcus Corey, Bailey, Clairemont, and Keegan Rice for all their work.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Uh, to make these kids winners.
Yeah, the culture, the Skating Culture is incredible because of Mount Precious.
Absolutely, agreed.
Alright, one final thing, then I will be quiet. Poetry Out Loud tomorrow night, Plymouth State University. Uh, is it Silver Hall, I believe is there, is it, yeah, uh, Dalton Lilip will be there, and I believe it's. Like six to eight, but I can get back to you on that time.
Yeah, send us an email.
I will, he's very excited for that, I think five to, I think we're. Um, Jen, I talked to Jennifer Witcher and she was thinking between five and eight schools will be represented there. And then they'll just do two poems, you know, one round and then a second round, and it'll be a night. Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to go to the state house?
They will after this, whoever, whoever comes in, you know, wins this one will now move on to the state. And we'll keep you posted on that.
Hopefully I'll be there.
Yeah.
I'd like to go watch it.
Yeah. Dalton says you, you gotta win it.
Of course he is. I, he's got my vote.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Alright, we have um. Committee reports, um, policy committee next evening, was there any new?
We have three policies we are sending on to first reading next. Meeting.
Um, then.
And one that we sent back to revision.
I don't think we have any other um, meeting minutes in the. We do have a host of uh, policies on for second reading. Um, so I guess, if anyone has any questions or discussion about. Them, um, maybe any particular one of them before we. I, I, I do have one.
Okay.
Uh, I believe it's. When the, we didn't get it printed out, so I'll, I'll try to pull it up on my. Oh, do you? Thank you.
I have one right here too.
Uh, I think what I'm looking at is uh, GBGBA, which is the uh, use of automated regulators. So, my question uh, on this one, and it doesn't look like it, it's something that has changed. Um. Is it says AEDs will be administered only by those employees designated by the principal and constitution of the school nurse. Employees will be authorized after successfully receiving and completed appropriate training in CPR and high aid use. Um. Aren't those things designed to be fairly foolproof? And they have instructions, and the idea is like, anyone can grab that thing and use it in an emergency.
Takes you right through the steps.
Yeah, I, I just wonder why we're. In, in that sort of emergency, why we're saying, wait, we gotta wait until so and so's here because they don't certify and use this equipment. Shouldn't we be encouraging, you know, if, if it's this type of emergency, the, the things. Put the things on, it's gonna tell you whether you need to use it or not, uh, it's gonna detect, you know, whatever, whatever it's gonna detect to determine whether to, to. Actually activate.
That's a good point, if we're Saturday morning pickleball, there's not gonna be a teacher there that's certified.
One of the medical centers outside, they have a code on it, they call, I want to get the code, no matter who can use it.
Yeah.
We have one outside the Peth, uh, Town Hall as well.
I guess my, my comment would be. I think they're designed to be cool too, I don't know, I don't believe we should. I mean, I know that, I, in an ideal situation, we have somebody that knows what they're doing, has been trained. In an emergency situation, we may not have that available, and I don't think we should be looking like. You know, who is, who, who goes and uses it if it is. That was my, that was my only comment.
So with this policy as written. If somebody came in and used it and something went wrong, but you couldn't, they'd be liable because of our policy, is they used it against our policy?
I don't think that's.
So, if you, the, there's actually a. The last part of the policy says, the district in persons administrating the AED shall enjoy the limitations of liability specified in one fifty-three eight thirty-one. So the Good Samaritan statute that limits your, your personal liability, if in good faith, you're trying to intervene in a medical, in a, in a medical emergency. So there are, there are statutory protections, New Hampshire statutes for somebody who's in good faith. You know, making a medical.
So then it doesn't matter if the policy goes through the way it is and if they're protected.
Yeah.
If, if it's not a staff member, that's what I'm saying.
I would, I think what Jay's saying is we would hate for it to cause a delay.
Right.
In treatment for somebody that's waiting for that teacher that's certified, I, I would move to take number two right off of the policy.
And, you know. Yeah, and, and I, you know, ideally, ideally, we have enough folks that are trained that this never becomes an issue.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't really had to use these things, um, but I just wanted to. Bring up the issue because I thought.
I mean, if you're using one, time is of the essence, so it makes, what you're saying makes sense, control sex.
We can call it, I think it's a clarification, we can answer school board.
Right, they put that.
Right, exactly.
If you want.
Yeah. They use the AED. They may, I mean, they may, it may be some kind of.
Part of CPR training.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of the whole process that you are taught to is being, it's part of your CPR.
Yeah, and, and do we even have a clear sense of who, how many people, we staffers in the school have that kind of?
Yeah, we, we do people. Well, what Joe was saying though, say it's the Saturday morning pickleball or footsaw or open gym or something, but something. Where there's, where there's a bunch of people that aren't.
Yes.
But we have no real staff member there, it's just the, the rep department running the, the program, footsaw or whatever it is. Um, and I mean, they go and they use it and they save somebody's life. What, that piece of paper isn't gonna stop them.
No, these are our policies for our staff.
Right.
This, this is like what we're asking our.
Right.
Our people to do.
Or if we have a staff member that hasn't been trained and does it.
Yeah.
Even though in the policy, I mean.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna say scare me or something like that.
We don't wanna slow down.
You prohibit or.
Yeah.
Slow down.
Right.
Quicker, not trained to grab the AED and get to work.
And then, you know, there is sort of that menacing last section there that says, you know. If you violate the policy, you, you could be fired, so. Doesn't say that exactly, I don't think that falls under disciplinary action, but.
Was burning people to stake earlier.
I don't know, maybe it makes sense to see if there's a.
Yeah, valid reason.
A valid reason, and maybe Primex says this has to be our policy, you know, but.
We'll, we'll bring it back to the drop.
Okay, so can you just review that one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything general is gonna be affected by the title nine, uh. I think if we're gonna vote them in and then have to take them back out because.
I think either way, we have to vote them in and then wait for the um.
notification.
To, to come back with the revisions.
That's all recent.
Yeah.
Hampshire statutory change.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, none of these are.
So can I, Sharon, make a motion to approve all of these policies except for GBGBA?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I, that was my motion.
Second. Thank you, thank you, Joe.
And I have to go through all of them.
Any further, any further. Any further discussion on that? I have all those in favor, uh, I think if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, tensions and.
Thanks for picking that up.
Um, up next is staff nominations, recommendations, resignations.
We have one retirement that came in a pair of retirement and Bobby Donahue, this will.
Oh, good for her.
This June will be last time with us, so.
Oh, it's sad to see her go, but, but good for her.
Technically a resignation, but a retirement.
Yes. So do you need? Do you need a motion to accept her?
Because of the collective bargaining agreement, it has to be submitted by February first, which it was.
So do you want a motion to accept her resignation with regret, her retirement?
Her retirement.
But good for her.
With congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, there you go, perfect, yeah.
Uh, second. Thank you, Amy, thank you Jasmine, uh, all in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
And that motion is unanimous. We thank her for her service in the district.
Yeah.
Many years.
Been here for a long time, yeah.
Uh, and then we dealt with the budget and the warrant, is there anything else we need to do there?
No, if there's any other questions.
Um, nothing on the new business and continue with the CIP.
Can I bring something up?
You name.
Um. We've got a lot of great news happening, it's just all red, and I can't help but look at our nice electronic sign. As a great opportunity to talk about all the good things that we're doing and. Would it scream there's no sledding? I think I see that every time.
I did try to say chance the other day.
Okay, well, I guess my point is, is that there's a lot of other good things happening at the school, and it's, to me, it shouldn't be no sledding. If we have a sledding problem, we put a sign, you know, like where the hill is, and we use that board to like promote. And good faith, the lumberjacks, middle schools game going on, like, what can we do to positive in the community? And that's the best.
Yeah, I think there was a problem at one point about sledding and during. I don't think people understand it's a school, they just come in and randomly park and walk over.
Yeah, walk around.
It's very interesting, families will get out with a dang, those sledding next week might be.
No, next week will definitely be an issue because Massachusetts will be on their public school vacation, so.
So, but we should put.
That is, no, thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
And that's a great idea, yeah, I'm sure.
Anything else? Alright. Amy, CIP.
Um, first of all, Deb is awesome because I think she's.
I have much bigger spread, Kate, if I want.
I can't take all the credit. Um, I would keep going, do you have copies? Mary and Peter.
Sorry. Thank you.
Snapshot.
Yeah, it's just a snapshot of. It kind of, we. Used uh, Lincoln CIP as the model because that's what I know, so it was kind of easy to do that way. Um, and broke it out, I think we're going back five years on this. And. What we're putting in, the hundred thousand dollars we put in every year, isn't gonna cover what we need to cover. If our goal is to eventually get to the point where we don't have to bond things. Which is kind of the goal with any CIP, the first ten years or so, of course, that's not gonna be the case, um, a- and it's. Gonna take time to get savings, but after ten years of having a CIP, we could theoretically put a new roof on this building and pay for it. And not bond anything, not have to put it in a warrant article, not have to raise taxes, not have to anything. Um, and that goes with everything from replacing the truck, the tractor. Uh, paving the parking lots, although this time with pavement, that's not gonna be the case, obviously. Um, the new lighting, e- enlarging the, the, the back field, um, all the other things we've talked about, um. So this is just kind of the planning tool, and it's a, a working document too, it, it's a tool, it's not. Etched in stone. There is, there are different, like building maintenance. All of these things in here, there's a bottom line dollar that will be saved, and if something comes up and. All of the doors fall off all the classrooms, and we don't have them funded that. For however much it takes to fix them all, we can still use money out of that. CIP to fix those doors if the emergency comes up, so it's very similar to our, um. Our trust funds that we have now, just kind of spelled out a little more and, and a better planning tool to know how much we need to be saving. And it's. I mean, some of the numbers are scary, I mean, in building maintenance, you're eight million dollars. Obviously, then we're not gonna put that in there tomorrow. Um, in ground maintenance, we're at seven hundred ninety thousand dollars. There, we're not asking for that, we're not even asking for close to that, the goal, I think, what did we come up with, Deb, was um.
About two hundred thousand.
About two hundred thousand a year, uh, spread in these different categories. To start literally a savings account that we can start earning interest on, and so we'll be earning some interest and not just paying it for something else. So, just kind of a.
I tried to summarize it in words.
Yeah.
You know, so again, um, I mean, this is a great planning tool.
Right.
I, I learned a lot, go through this.
Yeah.
We put the numbers out there, we're trying to list all of the projects, you know, the great thing is, we just did our HVAC system, our, our roofs are in pretty good shape. Our wiring is our doors, our building infrastructure is, is pretty good, like Tim said, paving, that's gonna be coming up soon. Um, but yeah, so the goal is to not have to do any long-term financing or minimize that.
Right.
And have a savings plan, so we can go to the voters and say, okay, we need about a hundred thousand dollars in building maintenance. We, we want to start putting that in, and, and this is why, these are, these are the products that we have. We need about fifty thousand in grounds maintenance, again, this is why, so, yeah, it's. Just play it, you know, smartly.
Planning, yeah, and it keeps things very transparent and very educational and, you know. Gives a lot of information.
And the good thing about this with the school is that we can add things or take things away as needed, if for some reason we decide that. We're gonna contract out the fields, we don't need mowers anymore, we can take them right off again. Or we just, we need a dump fill, we can add to it, you know, it's, it's, I know, I'm joking, I know, we'll say that to them. We'll say that to them. That was a joke. We're not getting it. But if we wanna buy snowmobiles for the staff, we could. Yeah, things are getting, I think you. You could, it's a building, yeah. Um, when, and and we can start saving to put up a new garage, as we know, at some point we're gonna need one. And if we save for two years or three years, there's a portion of that we already have. So instead of borrowing the whole thing or bonding for the whole thing, we have a portion of it. Or we have enough for the engineering and the planning, and then we just borrow the construction costs, you know, so it's. Um. It it's, it is a great tool. It's definitely beneficial.
Definitely, definitely. Need to look at it every year. You know, these numbers might shift a little bit.
If you decide not to do one of these projects, can we take that money out, put it into something else?
Absolutely.
It's not a designated line item.
It it, exactly.
Okay.
It's not a designated line item. If we decide that we're um. We're gonna get rid of high school bleachers. We're never gonna have bleachers anymore. We can take all of that money out and reallocate it for something else in here. Yeah. Yep.
Or, or in the alternative, we maybe not put as much in the next year.
Exactly. Yep, exactly.
But the idea being. By the time twenty forty-nine rolls around and we need middle school, high school doors inside the classrooms. And the hundred thousand dollars is already in the.
We'll have it in a savings account earning interest. Yep. Yeah.
Like town, like they do a little fire truck.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, and um, the town of Lincoln is a very uh. Healthy CIP, and the town of Woodstock is really, it leaps and bounds in the past few years. There's, their CIP is looking really good. I just think it's a great thing for the school to have as well. Um, the, there will have to be a CIP committee. And and I would recommend that there be a um, whoever on your building. Um, it'd be facilities committee, be part of that and and meet with Deb prior to budget season, just to go over and.
Yes, the facilities committee can continue to.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Yeah. Or it could be part of the facility committee's duties as the CIP or something.
Yeah, because I mean, when you look at the the RSAs, it's all about all around towns. And their capital improvement plans are planning boards.
Right, right, right.
Schools don't have planning boards. I do know schools that have these, again, it's more like a budget.
Right.
It's not as formalized, you know. That's the campus.
Right.
Yeah, so when we say like, we need a hundred thousand dollars in the facilities, trust fund or cap reserves.
This is why.
Why.
Yeah.
Now, I just like that it allows us to be proactive in in saving and planning instead of reactive and trying to drum up funds when when something comes up that we need to do.
And I like, I think we had some conversations around the retained fund balance like that. Yeah, we have, we don't have that every year, but if we have that retained fund balance again, we can hold on to it for emergencies. It's not necessarily emergency. And so if something does come up.
Yeah.
Or that we do need a new roof.
Exactly.
Happens to the group. You know, kind of planning that, you know, ten years out. But we have to get it done now.
The monies we wanna put into these would be the unextended, unexpendable fund balance, not the retained fund balance.
Nice.
So they're two different, keep their retained fund balance. Well, I mean, you have to. Yeah. Roll it, but then after that retained fund balance, you still have unexpendable fund balance that would go back to offset the tax rate or whatever, go back to the towns. That is where we wanna get the money for this. So that, and we're saying two hundred thousand, if it retained, we we should come up with maybe a formula. To a percentage formula, so that if there's only hundred fifty left and not two hundred left, it goes by percentage.
Probably just adjust this.
Yeah.
The next year.
And and, yeah.
I think you would also wanna get your other. Trust fund, like other things you might have coming up, like stuff like that or.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Yeah. I guess the other question is, is this, is is this designed to? Sort of. Um. Get rid of the trust funds generally, so we would still have some.
The trust fund is just the savings mechanism, whether it's a trust fund or a capital reserve.
Right. No, I I'm saying in terms of like, we allocate a certain amount of money every year, warrant it was to these, to these different trust funds. Instead of doing ten thousand in technology, are we gonna, because we have our, we have a whole.
Right.
Line item here, our whole group of things for technology, never looking at, okay, these are the things that we're gonna be replacing. Um, do we, do we no longer have to worry about putting? If if we're putting the, you know.
Streamlining.
The this amount into. The big picture capital improvement fund or whatever, however that's ends up being structured. Do we, are we still looking at ten thousand here, fifty thousand for, so?
I think we will have it in the general. Categories.
Yeah.
That's how we kind of set this up. I mean, the towns are very specific, I think.
The towns are more, way more specific, and I think even at the school, you're gonna have to be a little specific.
Yeah, so we, but like I, again, I was trying to write up a. Like for technology, okay, so we have about two hundred thousand dollars. Hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the technology projects. Um. You know, we kind of, you wanna look at those numbers, you might need to shift that.
Right.
Here. How much I wanted to put into our technology, but I think we wanna still keep our funds broken out.
I guess my question is, right now, what do we do? Fifty thousand in the technological.
Yeah.
Right? This thing is telling us in twenty twenty-six, we should be putting thirteen thousand five hundred in in into our technology gap improvement. So is, are we just saying, in the, is that warrant article now gonna just be thirteen five? You know.
Unless something comes up, yes, theoretically.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then same thing like, you know, we, if we're looking at. Uh, facilities, I think building and grounds maintenance probably. Building grounds maintenance. Will fall under those, so we'd be adding those up and putting that amount into into those.
I think that's, that's what our.
Yeah.
Intention is.
And then equipment essentially, because these are, these.
Yeah.
Are broken up essentially into what we have already.
Right, that's kind of.
The most. Uh, you know.
I'm saying that it's like. Yeah, so there's a hundred thousand or so that we put into trust funds normally.
Yeah.
We're not gonna put a hundred thousand plus this, we're gonna do this.
Right, no. Correct.
Okay, so this is.
So like.
Places where we're currently.
Instead of saying we're gonna put two hundred thousand.
Structured way to do it.
In the CIP, we're still gonna put it in different categories.
Yeah.
Um, but we definitely can't do a hundred thousand anywhere. It has to go up. It it to at least two hundred thousand if we're gonna start covering things like. A parking lot that needs to be done sooner rather than later. I mean, we've got a couple more years with it.
The other thing is, you know, we. Traditionally done in some kind of sign fund balance.
Yeah, right.
There have been years, not more recent years, but there have been more years, and that's why we started putting the percentages in, because we didn't have enough.
Right.
Fund.
Right.
So if you get to that point. Then. Put allocations in, not from the other side, so it'll just be a, you know. Just a current appropriation.
Right.
Yeah.
A set appropriation of putting in.
And I.
But again, I think this gives you time.
And that's a bridge across when you get to it. So when you come with the budget, you 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 will have kind of an idea of. I don't think we're gonna have enough this year to put this up out of an aside fund balance, and that could be addressed at that budget cycle. And then the board can decide if they wanna go. We're gonna have roughly a hundred eighty. Estimated or something, we'll go with that, or it's gonna be twenty. We still need to do another hundred eighty through taxation or something, you know, that that. Decision will have to be made at that point.
Well, I appreciate the amount of work that's gotten into this.
Yeah, oh, one other thing I would, this question is that, like, when you said that technology, we need thirteen five. Um, the remainder of that, I think it, we shouldn't just knock everything down and only put. A hundred and twenty in this year because that's what says we need. Take that extra and put it or or the book hasn't been allocated. And put it towards some of the bigger projects that we know will have to bond, like the garage, like um, the the parking lot. Things that have to get, that are gonna have to get done, that are gonna be bond items. Let's knock some of that down to not have to get it bonded. So keep it, try to level it funded this at about two hundred thousand every year, so you don't have your tax rate going up and up and down. It's leveling. Keep it. At two hundred thousand, even if. This year, as according to this, you only need a hundred and fifty. Put that other fifty in another large item that isn't fully funded yet. To keep it level. That makes sense. Did I say that right?
Okay. Yeah. One of the things I noticed, sorry, one more thing. It looks like you have parking. In. As a CIP item. It doesn't look like you have the garage.
Yeah, we do.
Is that? I see it. Owen's sharing. Maintenance of.
Maintenance for us, realize that. Yeah, yeah, the most expensive.
I knew it was in there, yeah.
Sorry.
Because that's based on our most, well, I think we got like over five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, maybe it's, so it's building jealousy.
Yeah.
Okay.
At seven hundred and fifty.
So. That's a, that's a huge.
Yeah, exactly. Um, you know, like, in the elementary roof, that was. Two thousand and ten, so we're talking only ten years to raise a million dollars. So if there's an extra, and I say extra, if there's an allocated ten thousand. In here, put that ten thousand in there where we know we're gonna need it. And let's try to get the bulk of it funded before we have to bond.
Good. Every time I look at this, it's like, okay, we can shift.
I know. And then you're gonna, that'll be forever. That'll be forever, because it's, it's still done. Um, at the town levels, the same, the same way. It's, it's a living document every single year.
And that's the work of the committee.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah. Oh, and thank you for, she did a lot of work.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Uh, different form.
Excel is not my friend, so all of these numbers are dead.
Uh, yeah. Anything else for continuing business? Um, all right, then I don't see any students or staff, but we do have.
Oh, one thing I just wanna point out, that we get the schedule. I love that we get the calendar of events and stuff. That's awesome. What wasn't on there was the alumni games, March seventh. Is the alumni games at the high school.
Basketball.
Basketball, yeah. The sophomore class is putting that on and they've got. Um, food they'll be selling, so come hungry, eat lots. And uh, go play basketball. Or watch, you know, you play, you're an alumni, you should play.
Yes.
You should do it. I'll visit you.
Yeah. Thanks anyway.
Um, sorry, I just went for the other. Thanks.
Paul, did you have anything?
Uh, yeah, just real quick. Well, my name is Paul Cherwana, three children in a school. Four, five, six. Just a couple of comments. Uh, I am trustee of the trust fund over at the. The. On the bank end, and we get about three percent on average on return. And uh, marks about four point five percent. Not sure what the school gets, but we're happy to. Help you with any of those, if those are better rates than you're getting now. I'm glad to see the AP scores back in the. Yearly data overview, they run hiatus for a little bit, but I see those back. Also, I'm glad that we're grading the children in fourth and fifth grade. I think that's a good move. Something we're all a little more familiar with. It's a little hard to hear back here, so I don't know if we can put more. Better audio in here. I'm really not hearing it back here on the power. Prouds on TV, but.
Paul, if that happens again, you're the only one here. You're welcome to be chair up so you can hear. Absolutely.
Okay. Or just let us know.
Yeah, let us know.
Right, I know you guys are closer. Um, yeah, I won't go over too much of of these. I just go over one comment on the the grades here. Um, for the ELA for the seventh grade. In twenty twenty-two, they were getting fifty-six percent efficiency constantly. Then they went over to plus ninety. In twenty twenty-three, and then down again to fifty-two, twenty-four, which statistically is. And it it also happened in another. Uh, another grade set, so I don't know who the teacher is doing his task, but statistically it's. Uh, an analogy, just let's say that to be kind. I don't know if they're teaching to the task. Or uh, what what they're doing over there. I mean, there's an argument to teach the task, which math or or science, but uh. This is uh. How it aligns with what all the other grades are doing. So whatever they're doing, it's not what everyone else is doing. And uh, it should be looked at. You know, that's not a trend. I don't think we wanna see continually. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, um, we do have non-public proceeding, so I will call the board for non-public.
Non-public for what? Ninety-one eight one?
Uh, ninety-one eight three C.
Thank you.
Yes.